Well, let's go ahead and get started if you don't mind. Peggy, would you please leave the vacation?
Sure. Our heavenly Father, we come to you today filled with such gratitude for all the wonderful blessings that you've given to each of us, to our community, to our state, to our nation. We just, we want to thank you, Lord. We want to ask for your wisdom as we go about doing the business of the city. We want to always be mindful of all the people that we represent. We thank you for our homes as we remember and pray for the homeless. We thank you for our food as we pray and remember those that are hungry. We thank you for our health as we remember and pray for those that are in sickness. Lord, especially we ask that you be with us tonight, and we thank you for all the wonderful blessings you bestowed on us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Peggy. If you have agendas...
I do. Let me go over...
Okay, go right ahead. Those who do have their agenda in front of them, we may be going to get started. Does there are any questions on the agenda? I don't know. We'll find out when she gets back. We have any proclamations? Questions on the consent agenda?
I don't believe we have any proclamations.
We don't? Okay. Questions on the consent? Do we have a public hearing? Are you talking about the annexed percent? Did you get those questions answered? What are questions that we had on that?
Those were relating to annexation that I'm going to bring back in a special presentation, too. I didn't get any comments from anyone, suggestion changes to this allocation.
Oh, the allocation...
There's still time, still time to do that, isn't it, by my...
It looks like there's a little snap of it in all the precincts, so...
Yes, that was the goal, just to probably divide it up.
Do I have any other question? Resolutions to the industrial district on RDB, then Burwell Enterprises. Tossy, we promised not to leave you up for 30 minutes, maybe this time?
Thank you.
And Michael talking about Liberty Old Field change, are you trying some?
Yes, sir, and just to reiterate, Liberty, we approved this sometime last year.
Right.
They meet all the conditions, and there was an error in the information that we had. They're not, they're still eligible for the enterprise program, they're just not in enterprise zone. But what that does is make their requirement a bit more stringent, and they, instead of hiring 25% individuals coming from a low to moderate income area, they have to fire, or they have to hire, they have to hire 35%.
So it just works in our favor?
Yes, yes. And they're fully aware of what the requirement is.
Right. Looks like we have some more instances concerning the zoning, you lead the Boyce, you practice the downtown overlay zone, Mr. Brennely, Tosh is going to go over the parking, the commercial motor vehicles. Some Toshers in the car.
It'll be a tossy.
Okay, tossy.
Which was the headlines today.
It was.
That was the headlines today.
Good job, Paul. Revision of real rights for Sherwood with Steve, I guess Steve will be here. And then we have appointments of boards. I would just encourage everyone that we get this done fairly quickly. I think there's an awful lot of questions out there, and people wanting to know. And the committee part of this city is so important, there are just so many different things that they do, and et cetera. With that in mind, are there those that you'd like to entertain? I think we had a MOUDB application from...
Joanne Lewis?
Yeah, Joanne Lewis, and I believe we had an application from also for, how do you call it, the survey, I mean, the appraisal district from Mrs. Crutcher.
Lori.
Lori Ruiz-Crutcher.
For which one?
For the MOU, excuse me. The appraisal district, thank you. I keep looking over Tom because he's in, I mean, he's on. So I didn't know if y'all wanted to talk about those as we speak, or if we needed to wait, or what, Norma?
Well, it's on the briefing session after Ector Theater, so I have some...
So we'll talk then?
We'll talk then, because I do have some applications of interested board members that are currently serving, as well as a couple of new ones, so if we could defer until that point.
Right, you got it. I'm sorry I jumped to conclusion.
No problem.
One thing that we probably do need to make sure of is the CRMWD is a, it is a...
It's statutory.
Statutory from CRMWD, so that's not anything that we can change on that.
You saw that, too, Michael.
Right. So with that, no other questions, we'll go right into Philip in the Ector County Theater.
Counsel, I want to kind of start the conversation before Philip goes into his presentation. But I wanted to start really for the benefits of you, counsel, give them a little bit of context and history on the Ector Theater. As you know, we started this project several years ago, and we were, when we were in our formative stages, we had a lot of discussion about the Ector Theater. Quite frankly, the discussion initially was to tear it down, but we heard from the public, we heard loud and clear that they didn't want it torn down. As a matter of fact, there were several people who attended meetings that we had regarding this particular project, and the council at that time, the direction was is that we wanted to preserve the Ector Theater, and we wanted to preserve it as closely as it was, rather, keep the integrity that it had in terms of its, what it looked like and what it, what it meant to this community, certainly when it began. So part of the work that was provided to our consultant was to research the history of the Ector and to look at historically what colors were initially in the theater and what sort of palette would be created, or recreated, or kept, in order to maintain that integrity. This is the palette of colors, okay? One of the things that we noticed once we put it in this format is when you look at it, Peggy, it's really not that attractive. But this is, in fact, what was originally in there. This is the premises, the premise that we have worked under for beginning of this project. Ms. Dean, I'm going to pick up, Peggy. Peggy came here one day, we were meeting, and she saw this palette, and, well, Peggy, you didn't like it, so...
And this is, this is the chair?
This is the chair. Paul's modeling for us.
Paul's a guy.
So I guess my initial question to the council as a whole, is there any thought, is there any desire by the council to either maintain this or consider a different option for additional colors or different colors within the interior of the Ector Theater?
And you're not going to let us see that option until we decide that?
Yeah, well, I want to get consensus, but we've got some selections for you as well to look at. But again, our position as staff, our initial direction was to keep it the way it was, and this is the way it was. If this council chooses to do something different, then I think we have some options for you.
It's a little vague.
1950s, as a matter of fact, yes.
And I know that's part of the historic feeling, is that those were the colors back then, but this is a 19 treaty, and people are going to be in there, and there are, before I would decide that, I'd at least like to see what, because they have, they have looked at some other options, and as long as it doesn't, isn't a huge departure from this, it would seem to me that it might be worth seeing if it could be updated just a bit.
Would there be any issue with money? I mean, have we already...
Actually, there's a slight issue, but we think we've got it well covered in our contingency, so...
It's not pretty, but to me, when you're preserving history, you almost have to...
Well, we've kind of built this as the renovation, the renovation of the historic Ector Theater, right, so...
But I'm open to look at... Yeah, I'm open to look at, but just like that hotel we stayed in, you know, it was not real pretty, but you knew that was the history of it, and so that made it, made you appreciate it more, just in my opinion. But I'm open to look. What was the community, you know, when you talk with the community, or you talk with the community, what was...
Well, again, whenever we began the project, it was, it was resounding, we want to keep it, and we want to keep it the way it is.
Mr. Sprouse?
It's a little vague.
Okay.
You know, you can have some of the same ambience without duplicating the old theater. Even the old theater, over time, from 1950 to 1980, probably made some changes.
And there were. We definitely see the changes, actually. Okay, in that case, we'd like to kind of show you some of the options, or a couple of the options, and we've, we've kind of discussed this with the owners of the hotel, Toby and Sondra, they've been very engaged in identifying colors. As a matter of fact, many of the choices that you're going to see, they actually brought to us, and we thought that those really weren't bad choices at all. So I'll let Philip go into his presentation, he'll give you a little bit of background, and he'll show you one or two rendings with different colored walls, because that's really, I think, the biggest thing.
Yeah, we could see a bigger piece.
Yeah, and because we're not proposing that we change the paneling and the lobby, we are proposing that this is probably not the color of carpet that we want in conjunction with that, and then some of the other colors. And then we've got this issue, this is a terrazzo that's in the lobby area, that quite frankly makes it difficult to match anything. So what we were proposed is perhaps covering that up with the same carpet that will be in the lobby. And you no longer have, this was always planned to be kind of a border of the terrazzo, but we can eliminate that, because that's just a really difficult color to, to get anything to match to it. Okay?
All right, go ahead. Counsel, Mr. Mayor Protim, just to start off, we'll talk about the exterior of the theater, and I'm just going to talk in basic terms of what's going to be happening with the exterior of the hotel. So the exterior facade of the hotel will remain the same, so we're still going to have the greenish color, the turquoise color out here. All of the LED will be, I'm sorry, the neon will be restored to a energy-efficient LED, so the original yellows and purples, pinks will be, will be in there. And the sign itself will be restored as well with the, with the LED. And then also in the scope of work, the original marquee actually becomes a digital display board, so we can play videos, we can make it look like a marquee with the original type red lettering, but it's going to be an updated, modern marquee. Just a closer look, and if you look on the color palette, it talks about a white terrazzo that will be located in the exterior area here, so when you see that color and wonder where that's at, that's in the exterior of the main entrance doors.
Where is it?
It's white. Excuse me. So within the Ector, this is before the construction started, this is what the Ector looked like. So we have the, the green coloring that's on the color palette here, we have the beige coloring that's on the bottom, and then it's the pink or mauve color. The chairs, of course, are red, and they're going to be the exact same red, and unfortunately with the chairs, those have been ordered, so we cannot make changes to the, to the chairs. So the chairs will be that color, that style will look exactly like that there. But within the scope of work, they're also, I say they, the contractors are to preserve the wheat stalks of these, of these, on these walls here, but we'll go through that here. So simple plan again of what's going on in the interior. Of course, there's an abundance of work related to the AV lighting, seating that's going on, but as it relates to the colors, the ceiling is being demoed out, and it's being replaced, and it's going to be an off-white type color on the ceiling. The walls are going to have a patch and repair work in the auditorium and the lobby, and so there's going to be some painting that's done in that area. There is water damage to the walls, and so the painting will take place in there, and the plans that it, as it is now, with the architect, is to replace the walls and match exactly what we've got in the theater now, so utilizing the same, same color palette. And as we mentioned, it would be keeping the wheat stalks that are within the theater. So this is the lobby area, this is the carpet that was picked out by the architect in the lobby, and this is the green-black terrazzo, and where that would be located there in the lobby.
It's only a limited amount of that terrazzo that's included.
And it's already there?
It's existing.
So the scope of work calls for the repair of that terrazzo, right, Tom?
Yes, and then where the, where this lobby will now tie into the conference center, that used to be restrooms and some other things, now they'll have to, the contract includes them putting in this terrazzo in that area. And the carpet piece is actually...
Go back up?
They, they found the original carpet that was in there, a piece of it, and that is matched towards it.
And by not doing that terrazzo, it actually is a savings, if we decide not to do it and then with it?
So is, is there two shades of carpet there, or is it just the rendition? It looks like there's a strip that's lighter.
Sure, this is the same carpet. What is this supposed to be is the lighting effect within the room, so it is all the same, same carpet.
Okay, okay.
So this is an interior look based on the architect's current plan, so you still have the same colored walls, the red seating, of course, you see your new lighting, you have LED lighting within the ceiling, the updated stage, so as it is, this is what it's supposed to look like based on the plans now.
So that's the color, the way the lighting was originally, that yellow lighting and stuff?
No, I believe that LED lighting on the walls and on the arch ceiling, that was not there previously.
It's a new effect.
It's a new element.
So there are departures from the originals?
On the lighting, yes, ma'am.
This is a shot from the balcony, it's not a very clear picture, but you can, you can see as well the wall coloring, the lighting that's being done, and that same color scheme being brought into the, to the balcony as well. So to echo Mr. Marrero's comments, we've heard comments from council, and also the operators or the hotel owners, that they'd like to see the possibility of a change in the colors rendered within the theater. Mr. Kerr reached out to Stoddard, who's the contractor for the project, and they have offered to paint a color that we choose for $35,000 as a change order, and as Mr. Marrero said, that's within the contingency of the budget, so it's something that can be done. However, I think we would also want to point out that this construction is, is going now, and we need to make a decision pretty, pretty quick as well, that will avoid this cost inflating on us as well. So we put our heads together, we have a Monday morning meeting with, with the Ofs, we've got city staff that's in, and we came up with utilizing a gray color within the theater. Paul, can I borrow the chair one more time? So if you look at this wall here, we're not saying this would be the exact gray, but we feel that this red would play well with the, with the gray, and the carpet that's suggested for the theater is this carpet here, so in that lobby area of utilizing this, this carpet, and then the stairs having a solid red carpet, so it would be, as it was stated in our meeting, a dramatic entrance or staircase coming in, but anywhere that's a public space, as far as the lobby going out to the seats would be this color that we recommended, and then the red for the, for the stairs, and then utilizing a gray, gray color there.
Paul, can you go back to the lobby area so we can show exactly what we mean by the carpet?
So this, this would be the, the areas that would be red, and as Mr. Marrero said, if we went with this carpet and deviated away from the historical plan, we would seek covering this terrazzo. This has been our, our big headache in trying to find an option for council. It's very hard to match this black and green terrazzo with anything else, so that would be our recommendation, if we, if we deviated away from the historical aspect, that we cover that terrazzo with a, with a carpet.
And then the black carpet with the red stripe would be in the lobby area, but it will also continue down the aisles all the way into the auditorium as well.
So would be on the staircase going up there?
Red would be on the staircase.
On the staircase, yes, sir, the solid, the solid red.
And again, since Phil mentioned, we, we've been having this discussion with Toby and Sondra for some time, we've looked at a variety of different options and colors, but when we met yesterday, these are the ones that not only did they feel strongly about, but we thought would be a good, a good selection for the theater.
So if you went with the gray on the walls, what color would you accent the wheat?
So we would actually suggest to, to remove the wheat, paint over it, texture over the paint over.
Not keep them.
Not keep them.
Not keep them.
See, I think that's the best part of the historical elements.
I wanted to keep it.
So why would, I mean, why would we not, just, I mean...
Well, go back, go show the color of the wheat stalk.
I mean, I'm liking that gray in the, in the carpet, I like that.
That green that's up there is, matches the color of the wheat leaf.
So imagine that green with the gray background, we just didn't think it would look good. You guys may have a different opinion of that, I think.
But does it have to be green? I mean, could you go with the...
So I would anticipate...
The wheat color?
You could paint it another color. What I would anticipate is that would be an inflated cost, so to preserve those with different colors, I believe, would raise the, the cost.
I'm sure that would be increasing the cost.
Although I would say I would not anticipate that to be...
That's not hard.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, since we were already planning to do that anyway, weren't they going to repaint it?
They were going to repaint, yes, ma'am, but with the existing colors that we were utilizing.
The wheat area that was going to be, you know, touched up and that type of thing, because there's, there's grit, goldish trim and things like that, some of that would be hard for them to repaint, per se, but they would clean it and touch it up, but everything around it would be repainted. It would probably look very new, but I mean...
It's mainly the wheat, more than even the colors, is what gives it a historic look. I mean, if you're talking about historic, that more even than the colors.
One other thing I'll point out, on the wall color, you see we've got the pink and the green, what we were proposed would be a gray, two tones of gray. So in the ribbed area, we will probably do something a bit darker, and in the wall area, we would do something a bit lighter, that way there's a contrasting of the gray.
Don't you have a rendition of that?
I just have the, the gray, sir.
Not the darker?
Not, it doesn't have the darker, no, sir.
It doesn't have the too Tom, do we?
There's a slight difference in the rendering, but it's, again, this was done without, this was kind of us asking for a gray, not really having specific colors. This is slightly darker than this. The lighting and stuff doesn't really make it easy to...
Is there an acoustic reason for the ribbed wall?
It is beneficial acoustically.
The other thing to note is that we added 30 feet to the back of the theater, and again, going with the original plan, these were going to be the colors and the finishes of the back. That's not a problem that we changed, we were planning on the colors to match, that won't be an issue, and I don't think there will be a cost item.
It's a change of color.
It's just that the original, they weren't going to have to paint everything, they were going to patch and repair and leak the, the leak. Now they're completely retaining over as far as...
Well, there was some level of paint, right, Tom?
They were going to put a new coat of paint on all of the walls, but the leaf and stuff, they would not just cover it, they would clean it, and they would cover it so when they're doing the other paint, but when they do the, the leaves and stuff would be a touch up, basically clean it and touch it up.
I don't know much of the cost, but I would think that, you know, for it to still look pretty historic, you'd need to have that leaf, and it needs to be a complement color of the gray and the red, you know, which is green. I don't know if it's that shade of green, but that is the complement of gray and red. I don't know that it's that, that green, but...
Put your fingers on there, zoom it in.
All right. Well, the thing I were concerned about with the gray is that the leaves, you can't see them very well, but they're gold.
You got gold, gold lining.
They're gold.
They're not green?
They're, they're green, but then the stock parting...
Oh, I see.
Yeah, oh, I see. The brown looking is gold.
I see that.
I can cram some of it up.
It's kind of hard to put with gray.
If we're after the wow factor, then I don't see any reason to do that. I wouldn't spend any money saving the wheat, because we're, this is our marquee part of the, of the downtown area, and I'm more for the wow factor, let's, let's get something where you walk in and say, man, this is nice. More so, excuse me, I didn't grow up here.
I did.
I have, I have no...
And I was in there.
I've been in there, but I...
When I grew up.
When I was mature.
And I think that has a lot of bearing. I didn't grow up here.
It does, it really does.
I mean, I don't have that emotional attachment, but honestly, that's why a lot of people agreed that $10 million to renovate this was okay because of those memories.
I mean, that, that green looks different from that, you know? That would brighten it up, but I, I mean, I know it's beautiful with the gray and the red, and it is, I mean, you can't deny that, but if we're trying to be historic, I think we can still say, wow, this is historic, this is, but I guess if you haven't been in there, you know, you're not coming back to see it, then it's kind of like, eh, this is boring, you know? I like it.
Well, that green is a prettier green than this green.
It's probably the same one, it may be a lighting.
And this was taken from a cellphone camera, and this is all shop lighting, this is an original lighting to the building, so the picture might not be very...
It's not that bright a green.
It's not.
The, go back to one thing, you said the chairs were coming in just like this.
Yes, they're going to be that red chair here, sir.
Michael, do you need a vote?
We need a direction, this, sir.
I mean, when you look at the chairs, it's probably not going to be a good match with that, with that, so...
That's the original color of the chair.
The original chair.
That's the original chair, yes, ma'am. Not, I was in there. No. We have, it was dark, and I sat right there.
I think what it was, Mary, is that the red that was in there, which was this, it's faded, yeah, it was almost pink.
Yeah, that's probably true. You know, I don't want to spend any more money, I really don't. I like the gray and red, but I like the wheat. But the green wheat won't go with the gray and red. Philip, could you go in and just do it yourself?
Do you think I'll do it? Didn't you spur?
And I guess he's, he's not a painter.
And you could still preserve history, you know, we could have a few things there and talk about it, I mean...
We can take pictures of the old theater and have pictures of the old theater on the inside.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm softening up, but not really, but...
What, what do, I mean, y'all spent a lot of time on this with the Ofs, what is their...
I think it's their desire to do something different than what's there now.
They want to do something different.
They're going to be the manager of that facility, are they not?
Yeah, and you'll, you'll see that probably at the next council workshop, a lease agreement for them to operate that.
And this flows into there?
There is a difference, I mean, there's a marked difference when you leave the theater and you walk into the conference center. You are in two different spaces entirely.
And I, and I think that's fine, and so in either situation, either of these, that would be the case, you would realize that you have left the historical theater, because it's very, it's, it's not, it's not really rustic, but it's, I mean, it's really upscale, it's, it's really cool in all of the gray areas in the hotel, it is, nothing can be feathered than either one of these colors.
We do have pictures and, you know, that we could put in it of the old, I mean, you know, just to have the history.
We, hopefully we have some...
But I like the gray.
I don't think we're in a position to do anything high quality.
Philip's after when the camera's tomorrow.
So we don't think the leaves... The leaves are gone, teacher. No, they're just so hard-hearted.
It doesn't sound like the leaves are gone, it sounds like the reason that they have to be gone is because of the gold on the wheat.
Could you, could you recreate those wheat stalks in different colors that would complement grays? Or would you suggest that? By the way, your Vons are resident artists, yeah.
Can we say our opinion?
Just temperate them on that.
They are very disproportionate to me, I mean, as an artist, I don't feel it, to be honest, very, it distracts too much from the main stage, I mean, I don't see any color, so it's not my opinion.
Very good, thank you.
It's a pure architect thought.
It's a pure architect thought. Thanks, Aron.
What do you think, Steve? Did you grow up here?
Yeah, she did. I think the Crockett kids sat a little away. If I remember this right, am I right?
But we were the good crowd.
We were the good side. It was these side that sat on the, on the other side.
They were in the balcony.
Oh, yeah, oh, we never got to sit in the balcony.
Yeah, we never got to sit in the balcony.
What do you think? What's your thought on it? Couldn't care less?
No, I mean, I like those lights.
You could live with it either way?
Good answer, Steve.
Yeah.
That's blatantly courageous.
Some things, Vanessa thinks, I think, other things.
What do you think? You like it either way?
Yeah, but preferably not.
No, no, leaves?
I am, I am, let it go. But I, I like that carpet a lot, and I really like the gray a lot, I'm not...
It looks, the chair definitely looks better.
That's my only thing, is if, if the public wanted some history, then we need to give them some history. You know, just something that's saying this is history.
Well, and the outside is going to look the same.
And the outside, yeah.
I mean, other than the marquee being more...
Right, right.
And I, I do like the idea of it being the wow, when you walk in.
Yeah, it's nice.
Yeah, that's different than what...
So, the consensus is to proceed with new colors. Am I hearing that? Okay.
Do you like it, Peggy? Do you like the gray and reds? Or what were you thinking?
Yeah, I, honest, I will be, I'm being very candid now. I mean, I think this looks a lot better than, I've never seen this. I saw this, and I just went, "Ah." I mean, really? Look at the carpet, look at the color. I mean, I think, I think it looks old. It does look better on there. I mean, I, I like the gray and the red, but, but I do think that it makes it, it gives it a wow factor. It also makes it look pretty contemporary, which is not what we were... I mean, gray and red are pretty contemporary, modern colors. And so, you know, in that regard, it's a pretty big departure from this. I personally like it better, but I'm not, you know, not having been on that other council, but felt, I, I don't know. I can, I can, I'm not trying to waffle. I can live with either one of them. This looks better than I thought it would when I looked at the palette. I like the gray and red better.
Go closer to the system.
Yeah, we are.
Well, I don't know, is this something that the, I mean, the only thing I hate about talking about, I know we have to decide, but the unfortunate part about it is that the mayor and Malcolm were both on the other group that felt that. So, really, Dewey is the only one sitting here that can speak for...
Oh, yeah.
The inside, as far as the inside, I don't remember ever discussing.
I don't think Malcolm was on the council then either.
I don't mean, I don't think that. But I, I think, I think the suggestions are fine with me. I think that's great. I don't remember anything. Tom, do you? I mean...
Um, I don't know if I was there at that time either, but I know Malcolm was after I got there.
The discussions that I recall is that we talked extensively about preserving the actor as it was.
Right.
Not, not maybe, we didn't say, "You've got to keep the mauve, and you've got to keep the green," but...
Right.
There certainly was a discussion about keeping it the way it was.
Right, right. I think, I think that was, that was the biggest thing.
The public wanted us to save it, yes.
We had a lot of discussions also about the addition to the back, remember? But outside of that, I think we're fine with what direction suggested.
And what was that?
He didn't make that one clear.
That was not Sidney's suggestion.
The seating area, you know, where the, where the seats really are? What is it going to be?
So, the floor under the seats is going to be concrete. It's going to be a sealed concrete. The only color you'll have is, is going to be the carpet that's running down the aisle.
Okay.
That's like what your mail is, except the very front.
I'll tell you that Toby and Sandra, again, their position is that they think that the colors need to change because kind of the same, for the same reason, I mean, they, they see these colors, and they've seen this picture. They think that that, that an update is due to the theater. I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think they're looking at it from the standpoint that it's going to help or hurt them if they don't change the colors. They just think from, from an operations standpoint, they like a different color.
And the panel will still be?
The panels still, yeah. And the chairs are all the, the same chairs that were in there, they're just restored. Right, Tom?
Yes, they...
And they're very comfortable.
They're rebuilding.
Yeah, I really like, I sit, I sit in that chair when day, and it's very comfortable.
Very comfortable.
I do like, if there is pictures out there that you could put in, I don't know if there are or not, that's, I don't have any.
Something.
Yeah, I don't know if we have any, but there may be something out there.
You can find some online, we've done that before. And you could frame them or something.
Right. This is a huge space, ladies. I mean, if you're going to hang pictures, you want to, you're, you're talking about something significant. You can't just...
I mean, it could be in the lobby area.
I mean, just something so they know...
Yeah, I don't think you want to distract.
Yeah, not out here, at all.
You wouldn't put anything in there.
No.
Most modern theaters today, and again, this, I realize this is not a modern theater, they would recommend darker colors on the walls. Because it allows you to then focus on the stage and not have light reflect, reflect on the walls.
Well, quite honestly, that, that yellow LED light and all that stuff, that took away the historical look of it anyway, I think. That, when you, I mean, you know, if we said, "Okay, we really want to stay with that," that looked...
Well, it's RGB, right, Tom? So, it'll change different colors.
You can make it work.
And really, same with the, with the grays, if...
Probably more, probably more reds.
So, here we go. Gray and red, here we go, baby.
Gray and red?
And don't ask anymore. Don't give any more options.
And try to find some pictures for the live.
Your Von's going to go home and paint accordingly. All right, thank you.
Sure, let's see. And we are, I'm sorry, just Philip brought up, are we saving the leaves or not?
No.
It does, all right.
All right. Good question, Philip. Take a picture of it, though, just in case we get a... All right, boards and commissions, now we get to you.
Yes. My name is Melissa. Yes. Don't get scared.
Said not enough.
Yes, let me, let me explain what you have in front of you. The first list is all the boards and committees that council has for the city of Odessa. The highlighted ones are ones that we are considering at this point, so it's not overwhelming to do all of them. But I wanted to provide you an entire list so you can be aware for appointing the members as, as we come to them. So, the highlighted ones are the ones that we need to consider, council to consider. And of course, the top two is MO UTD and the ODC, so they could proceed with their meetings. But what I want, but what is attached behind it is all the, I sent out letters to all the board members, to the current board members, and I have received what you have in your packet. Now, they're interested, they checkmark what they are interested in. Some, they're interested in more than one. I try to put it by the order of the board as, from animal shelter, in, in line with the attachment of all the boards. The... The Board of Survey, and I was hoping to take this board by board to get some feedback, so I'll know where we stand with it, and hopefully, try to get those appointed as council is ready to do that.
Well, Jimmy Cox on the First Yellin Board of Survey, Jimmy Cox is, wants to continue to serve, and I'm fine with that.
And he did do a application, so...
And he was an alternate.
Correct, and we moved the alternates to a full member.
And the mayor's not here. And then on the Citizens Golf Advisor Committee, I have my name. He's got the form now, and he's going to send that to you in the morning. It's Eddie Reber. E D Y R E B B E R. He's an owner of, what's that, Square Lumberyard, T-Square Lumberyard, whatever.
Praying Square?
Praying Square. And he plays at Ratliff all the time, and he's, he's a perfect person for that, and very excited to serve. And then we, we know there's nothing to be done on CRNWD, right?
Correct, that, that will stay as it is.
And so, we go to Acton County Appraisal District, is that next?
Yeah. Yes. And you do have a couple of board appointments that were interested in it.
In here?
In the packet, yes.
And it's just one person?
It's one person, one rep by the city.
And doesn't have to be on the council?
No, does not have to be on the council. The only prerequisite that we have is to reside in Acton County for two years, and there's no delinquent tax property.
French drift is for less.
So, do we need to, this woman nominate or what?
I'm still trying to find that.
It's...
Do we have more than one for the appraisal district?
We do, we have Lori, Reese Crutcher, and Joshua. But he's also interested in several boards, so if he doesn't get, you know, there's other boards he's interested in. It's right behind Lori.
You know, Tom, you know that committee as well as anybody, you need an attorney helping that capacity to Joshua.
Wouldn't hurt. Wouldn't hurt, Mickey was the only attorney we had, I think. But I, I don't know that it would require that, really. Because they have attorneys who work for the district.
Sure, sure.
So, I, you know, not necessarily.
So, with any questions, do we want to nominate for these same or what?
Lori, Reese, I think is very, I've worked with her on several things, and she's, she's her, I think, would be an excellent. And Josh Crawford, I would agree, you know, he's kind of, he's, he ran against Brooks Langrath, and so that was sort of his first foray into politics. But since that point in time, I notice, he's become very, he's trying to be active in lots of things.
He was a big last choice.
He was your choice. Well, if you look at the other things that he would want to be on, really, there isn't. The only other thing he could be on right now would be Parks and Recreation. I mean, we've already agreed that ODC's going to stay the same for now. We can't do anything on CRNWD, and we've already appointed the Terps Board. So, the fact that he wants to be on a bunch of these is a little misleading, because there's really not, there's only two things he can be on. So, Parks and Rec are Acton County Appraisal District.
Firstly, I'd have to speak for Lori's two district because of the aspect of her involvement in commercial and real estate, which has helped a lot of things.
I don't, I don't think there's any... I can't, I can't see any conflict of interest on, I mean, her. Some people in her, in the law firm in which she's a partner own Basin, but I don't think that would be a conflict with the appraisal district. Would it? I mean, they both do...
Basin and...
Basin is on it.
Yeah, yeah, so that shouldn't be a conflict. So, it sounds like we would need to vote between Lori and Josh.
Or do you want to bring them in and talk to them, interview them?
I can get them for the next...
I mean, is that something that y'all like to do or make a decision?
If y'all know, do you think that Joshua would be interested in the Parks and Rec?
He says that he would. And I have an appointment on that that I haven't made yet. And that's really a happening board. I mean, there's a lot happening in Parks and Rec.
They're about to get started on their comprehensive plans.
Yeah, and just, just being in the same room with Steve Patton, there's a lot happening. You can feel it.
Better have your tennis shoes on on that one. Okay, is there any real problem then with Lori on the appraisal? And Joshua on the Parks?
Is that your nominee?
I don't have any problem with Josh on the Parks, I think more than happy with that. I think he's a good guy.
No, no, you're writing all this down.
I am.
I'm looking for sweetheart, but not that far.
Okay, for the 911, we have Chief Gurkey.
I would recommend maintaining Chief Gurkey.
Just FYI, in your packet, Housing Authority, we have some members that are still interested in serving, so that's in there. But the next one that council needs to consider is MO UTD. We have a vacancy, and we have a couple of people that expressed interest in serving on that board.
I'd like to serve on it. And was, that's possible or not?
MO UTD?
Yeah.
I'll be more than happy to back off if you need to. Y'all make the choice. Let me tell you a little bit about MO UTD, just because I've served on it before. Is that prior to, prior to I going on, you had to help me here, Michael, but we had problems with the capacity audit. And we had some severe problems with capacity audit. So, not that I helped any, but I went on as well as somebody that's been on that board, and I think it's just an absolute, Tom Blackstone has been on it, and maybe y'all can, I know he's been on a number of years, but Tom, Thomas knows this MO UTD, and knows the financials, and knows the other things, ins and outs of the operation of it. So, I would suggest we keep him on that board, number one. But just, that's just a little information, Thomas, nothing more than that. But I'd be more than happy, if you'd like to go on it, I'd be more than happy to come on.
Go ahead, it's out of my interest.
Okay. I'll, can I?
Sure.
Can I quit?
That still leaves you with one vacancy, right?
I still have one vacancy and the two applications of interest, Joanne Lewis and Chris Stanley. And Chris Stanley has expressed interest in more than one board. He currently serves on the Public Art Committee, FYI. But did these other people say they wanted to stay? At this point, not yet.
I did talk to Thomas and he said yes. And Thomas has an application turned in not too far along ago with Housing. Yeah, so, so I would suggest Thomas stay on if at all possible. And Tom, you just took my place.
I'd like to recommend Joanne Lewis, she's retired vice president from Prosperity.
I've, I've heard an awful lot of good things. I asked about her today, and I've heard an awful lot of good things. Very interesting in being involved.
She is, she just retired, and she's trying to get some stuff going.
She has an awful lot of experience with, I've checked her one of her old employers. So, I, I think I would recommend her also with merit, if I could.
How about Armando? Haven't heard, does he come?
He does.
He does. He's only missed one meeting out of 2018.
He just hasn't told you if he wants to stay or not?
Not at this point, no, ma'am.
Well, why don't we move Tom and appoint Joanne, and then if the other two don't want to stay on, they'll let you know.
I think that's a good idea.
So, we'll appoint Thomas?
So, Ms. Flores says that if we need her to stay on the board... So Miss Flora says that if we need her to stay on the board, she will, but if you have someone that, her place, she's fine with that as well.
Oh, so there's something here from her?
No, she said, she's my sister, so I text her. I, I text her, and I asked her if she still wanted to stay on the board.
Chris is good, Chris has been president before of the organization.
Did you only have one application?
Two.
Two, but Chris, Chris Stanley has, his number one choice is the Public Art Committee.
Yes, correct.
He wants to remain on it, right?
Yes, correct.
And. So does Chris Flores mean that she, when you said Chris is good, were you talking about Chris Flores?
Yes, Chris served as president when I was on the board, and she was excellent.
So it sounds like.
I didn't find that to match.
The answer, if you still want me, is yes.
She, she has an awful lot of experience also, which I think is extremely important with Easy Rider. Especially since we're losing our president right now.
And you'll talk with her more? I will, and I'll get back to council on that one, so we'll appoint the two, three, four, the five. The, uh, yes, we're gonna go ahead and just do you two here, just, oh, get it off. Okay, ODC.
Council appointed Melanie and Jean.
Right.
And didn't, didn't we decide last time that we were gonna leave them all on, the other three on through their term in December? Which gives us the opportunity to determine how we're gonna replace the.
Correct.
So we'll leave that board as such.
Does that take council action, Gary?
Yeah, I think, I think what you're actually doing is if you'll just appoint those other three for.
The remainder of their term.
But you'll do that in your, in your deal?
You do that in the paperwork.
Please.
That way, you're, you're, you're literally looking at all of these appointments, and you're, in effect, reappointing, because while we, you give them terms, I just wanna make sure you understand, you're a new council, you can change the terms on anybody. The terms are for convenience to show you that you don't wanna, in effect, replace the board every year, you wanna have staggered ones. But when you have such a new influx of council members, you might want to have a bigger change.
Which is what we did with Jean and Melanie, I mean, that was like our first board meeting, and we said, let's just leave that.
Real quickly, on the Odessa Housing Finance, Melanie has maxed out her term limit. In your packet, you have a suggestion from Jill Miller to appoint Megan Bossett, just a FYI.
I think there would probably be a good one with the fact that she's associated with Mason, that's what the title, and has, she's an attorney, and has experience in those areas, which they need right now. Michael, you can probably attest to that. But you just went off.
Yeah, I kicked off, just like no one.
He kicked off, Vanessa gets kicked off. Any comments from, uh, Hunter? Yeah.
I was thinking.
Are you needing to?
No, on, on that item, I think we talked about it earlier, the allocating annexed lands to the single-member districts, we briefly talked about at the very beginning, and I think they're not in.
I just wanna make sure we.
Where's Megan going?
That's my issue.
Oh, just the Housing Finance Corporation to, to replace.
Just you, and the housing.
Yes, Melanie, it's sure.
Uh, Melanie.
Does council just wanna consider the other rest of the members at a later time?
On the Odessa Housing?
Yes.
I saw that Cruz was in there.
Yes, and he did turn in his application, and he's still interested in serving.
And Cruz is chairman of the board.
It looks like three of them have come off in, uh, August, six months now, so.
Yeah.
Maybe you could just leave them all on, and just look at them in August.
So is that a?
Is that a front, y'all?
Yeah. Parks and Rec.
We're gonna put Josh on the at-large position.
All the rest, we're finding. I present.
Nelson expressed interest in serving again.
Yeah, he's, he's called me, and he also has an application in.
I talked to Andrea, and she's interested in that.
You go off this time.
That still leaves you with one vacancy.
One vacancy, but that's the mayor's.
The MHMR, Margaret and John, I think, I mean, Margaret is a National Officer of MHMR.
Just put Josh from District Four, Parks and Rec.
No, on the at-large.
At the at-large, okay.
And, you know, if the mayor is interested, I don't know Christopher Stanley, but, you know, he's expressed an interest in that Parks and Rec. I don't know if the mayor would need a recommendation or not, but.
Larry Brown, what, Tom, would you like to?
Yeah, just say that.
So we've got about three minutes before we have to go.
Was Jimmy Peacock? He, he's now at large, was he a mayor's appointment, or what was he?
He was a council appointment, and he just went on recently, cause I remember his application not too long ago.
And I, you know, I think it's helped us, I mean, I think he's doing good, so I would just keep him.
And he's still good?
Yeah.
I'm following your stance.
Is Jim Rafter, is he moving, or no? I haven't heard.
I haven't heard that yet.
You know, he said he was, see, January, he was out there, I, I was just curious.
Here we are, February. All right, we got two minutes, you get all that?
I did.
You're good, no problem, just gonna throw it over to you when we get there, is it all right?